Let's call this meeting to order May 9, 2023. Tracy, can we have roll call, please?
Bermal, here.
Harrington, here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Item three is approval of the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda you want to talk about? Or we don't have any changes? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. We need a motion.
I'm sorry, let's make a motion on this.
So move.
Second. Thank you. Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? carries. Item four is our consent agenda. Is there anything on here that you want to pull off separately? All right, can I have a motion for this, please?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Item five is public comment time. If there's anyone in the audience that has anything to bring to the attention of council that's not already on the agenda tonight, now is your time to do that. I don't think there's anybody there for that, so I will go once, go twice, and close public comment. Item six, Kevin, how about an engineer's report?
Okay, sure, I've got a couple of things to report on. The library project, the acoustical panels and the circulation desk, that's now substantially complete. They've got a real small final punch list to close out that project. Rancho paved shoulders. We met with the contractor, L.L. Pelling, last week at a pre-construction meeting. So they intend to start this project right after Memorial Day, and they're anticipating it's going to take them four or five days to do the work, with the possible exception of the pavement markings. They don't have a schedule from their sub on that yet, but they'll, the streets department will put up some messaging boards along that stretch of road the week prior to, to warn travelers of the upcoming work, and then that'll be a flagger and pilot car operation while they do it, but they'll be in and out pretty quickly. Penn Meadows Park, North Parking, we had our 100% review, our staff review meeting today, and that went well. Our plan is to issue the bid documents on May 17, and then have a public hearing at the next city council meeting, the 23rd, and bid opening June 7, and then award the contract hopefully at the first meeting in June. So the construction we're planning on, starting right after the 4th of July, so starting in July through November, and then with some seeding in the spring of 2024. West Penn Street Project, we made a 50% supplemental to staff for review last week, and we've got a review meeting with staff scheduled for next week, and that's for 2024 construction. And then lastly, Centennial Park Next Stage, we've been working a lot with staff to come up with a phasing plan because of the budget. It's Ohio, over 16 million. So at the next city council meeting, Jen Hoffman and Natalie Opadahl will be making a presentation showing preferred Phase 1 for that project, and then also talk about subsequent phases, and be able to talk to you guys about that project. And that's all I have, unless you have questions. Any questions for Kevin?
So Mayor, when we talk about the new parking lot at Penn Meadows, if any of you drove by Penn Meadows, it's very typical on a weekend, every inch of grass they could park on, they parked on. It was from the barn all the way west to the ball fields, and it was all the reseeded areas. I know it drives a guy crazy because he's trying to get grass to grow, and they were in the mud, they were on the shoulders, and it's because, you know, there's no other option when you have that many, you know, it's the biggest draw to our city right now, on the weekends of people coming in, and so, very much needed.
Very true. Anything else? Thank you, Kevin. Ryan, item seven, the city ministerate report.
Sure, thanks, and I'd just note a couple of things that Kevin talked about already, provide just a bit more detail. At that May 23 meeting, Shy Batterie will have some phasing options for us, we'll also have some potential financing information and some updates on fundraising, and we'll be asking the city council to move forward with Phase 1. So that, just anticipate that coming in two weeks. Also, prior to that meeting, I am going to get some information out about the Penn Meadows Parking Lot Project. To the councillor Smith's point, I talked with Guy today, and he does have rope up and things to try to keep folks in place, but that's not going so well. This will be a fairly, a very expensive project, and as we got into design, there were some other pieces of the future trail project that made sense to do now, and I will articulate that in a memo here in the next week or so, so you have some time to digest that before May 23 as well. And then finally, you most likely saw a release, one of our many releases that the communications department does about social service applications. We have those requests out, so if you're aware of any, of any potential social service agency that might be looking for a grant application, send them Tracy's way. Obviously, we have a list of folks who have participated in the past, and those folks get notified, but if there's anyone new out there, we're hopeful that you folks will help us identify those. And that is what I have this evening, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Ryan? All right, thank you, sir. Item eight is mayor's report, and I just have two proclamations to read here tonight. Nick, are you going to receive the bike proclamation, or I'm going to let this one fly? Awesome. Requires a speech, just as I told Jeff. All right. "Our first proclamation is Bike Month and Bike to Work Week, whereas the bicycle is an economical, environmentally sound, and effective means of transportation, recreation, and fitness; and whereas the bicycle is considered a legitimate vehicle in all 50 states and is entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roads in Iowa except interstate highways; and whereas increased use of the bicycle will benefit all citizens by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing use of and dependence upon finite energy resources, and will foster healthy lifestyles; and whereas the City of North Liberty has an ongoing commitment to encourage bicycling as a viable mode of transportation and recreation; and whereas the League of American Bicyclists has established the month of May as National Bicycle Month. Now therefore, we, the city council of the City of North Liberty, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May as Bike Month, and next week, May 15 through the 21st, as Bike to Work Week. In North Liberty, Iowa, and encourage all residents to ride their bicycles to work, to the store, to the park, to school, and with friends and family to promote the many benefits achieved from bicycling." You don't have to receive it, I was just kidding. Awesome.
So it is Bike Month. The City of North Liberty is, of course, celebrating Bike Month. You have some water bottles. We didn't go for the cheap ones that you just like shove in your cabinet. These are like real water bottles you can actually use on your bike. And we styled them after our underpass. Next week, we'll have, we have a couple of city events for Bike Month. We've got spokes and scoops where we're going to start here, bike on trail and on our new bikeways. The mayor is going to say a few words at the beginning to sort of celebrate our underpass, and then we're going to buy everybody ice cream at Heinz to celebrate the completion of the Dubuque-Front and Cherry intersection. And then the rec department's holding a bike rodeo with the Iowa Bicycle Coalition on Thursday night, and you will buy Kona shaved ice for the first 100 folks that come and have fun, learn some basic ice safety, and get more comfortable on their bikes. Sugarbottom Bikes will be there to help tune up some bikes, make sure folks' bikes are in a good place. I will just also note that bikes are great, they are economical, they are a great way to incorporate your exercise into your commute. And bike is short for bicycle and not motorcycle, just wanted to make that. So I hope you folks will join us at those couple of events, and we don't have any like big road projects this year, but that's also a really great time to ride your bike is when we've got you detouring on other roads.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, my second proclamation tonight is for Older Americans Month. "And whereas the City of North Liberty includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community; and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently; and whereas the City of North Liberty recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age; and whereas the City of North Liberty can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, we, the City of North Liberty, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be an Older Americans Month in the City of North Liberty, and I urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging." And we do have two residents that are very active in our Johnson County Coalition here tonight. You don't have to say anything, Josie or Jeff, but if you'd like to receive this on behalf, you're absolutely welcome to. Do you want to say a few words first?
I'll do a couple, real, real quick.
Please do.
I'll be very, very brief, but thank you for doing the proclamation for Older Americans Month. I'm Jeff Kelbach, I'm an aging specialist with Johnson County Social Services and the staff liaison for the Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging at the county. Of course, unlike Nick, I don't have cool things to give you. I am not as eloquent as Nick at speaking either, so I'll try and just keep it brief because it's probably not overly clever. Livable Communities' mission is to serve as a unifying structure that fosters effective collaboration, communication, and education that will build and sustain a livable community for successful aging. We do that through a policy board and several action teams. We have our AARP, Age Friendly Action Team, which may come out and talk at some point as we're looking at doing a community-wide assessment through all of Johnson County, trying to assess needs, getting an idea of what kind of areas do we need to improve upon throughout our community. We have our Communications Committee, it's our monthly newsletter. We do have a website as well, it's located on the county for livable communities. We have a dementia-friendly Johnson County Action Team, really trying to promote awareness of individuals with dementia, how we can become a more dementia-friendly community. So we are looking to do some dementia friends trainings, hopefully in North Liberty as well, and businesses that are interested can feel free to reach out to us as well, as we would love to get more businesses, organizations, dementia-friendly training, one-hour training, brief. We have a False Prevention Action Team that's looking at putting on an event in September, False Prevention Health Resource Fair. We'll have more information as soon as everything is solidified on that. I told you it'd be brief, but I lied. Housing Action Team has really been pushing awareness of ADUs, as Ryan knows. ADUs are accessory dwelling units. Just want to make sure that individuals, families have as many options as possible to care for loved ones. Accessory dwelling units would potentially allow individuals an affordable alternative to caring and housing loved ones by also providing some level of privacy for them. Me and myself at the county, I provide care coordination to individuals, so if there's residents of North Liberty, and obviously throughout the rest of the county, I'm there to try and answer questions for them, help them with applications, whatever kinds of barriers they're trying to overcome. I really just try and make sure I eliminate those for you. You can definitely find more information, www.livablecommunity.org, or you can call me, 319-356-6090. Thank you, guys.
Awesome, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'll give this to you. Don't sit down yet, I should have caught you. You can take this back with you.
I'd rather have a picture.
All right. You got it.
Sorry, Rikisha.
What happened behind us?
It was like...
No!
There was a scattering behind you.
You know, I noticed that a couple of meetings ago in the picture, I'm like, where did everybody go?
It's about them.
All right. That's all I have, you guys. Item nine then is council reports. Anything that you guys have been up to the last couple of weeks, to report back to council? Yes, sir.
So I think emergency management happened since the last meeting, wasn't much going on, then it was mostly an informational thing, but the next meeting is the budget reconciliation meeting for the year, so they got some extra money coming in from COVID and things that they're still working on. And then the small business loans are still available through the 17th, and I think it's at the Corvo Library for people who had losses from the tornado.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mayor, I've got a few things. The Better Together 2030 Board met, did some, did some work in placing people on some different work groups. I'm in the process of, I'm getting a choice. Some folks were just placed on groups, so I kind of get a choice of which one. So what I want to share at this point with this work group is, this will be, this is, this will be a sustainable group. It has representation from all the municipalities. Had the pleasure of sitting and working with Nick's wife, Laura, from the Iowa City Council on a couple of things at this meeting. So there's, there's a number of pillars, I'll just briefly mention them. These are the pillars that came from the work that's, that's been done over the last year in their study, and these work groups all will work underneath these pillars. Champions of the Natural Environment is one. The second pillar is Authentic Vibrant Neighborhoods and Districts. The third is a Well-Connected Mobile Region. Fourth is a Thriving Inclusive Economic Ecosystem. And the fifth pillar will be Reimagined Human and Social Services. There's a lot of work that's already begun on all five of those pillars, and as work is completed, and we'll be meeting quarterly, I'll be reporting back on the work that's happening and the way that North Liberty will be asked to participate in a number of those things and work groups as it moves along, so happy to report on that. Our fire department, we would be remiss if we did not mention something fantastic that occurred. As we all know, they've recently changed their staffing plan. We all were part of approving the hiring of three additional full-time folks with the Safer Grant. Not only has it had an immediate impact, it's already saved a life. And so, in a little bit of fact-finding here this evening with the fire chief prior to the meeting, I wanted to make sure the fact was correct, and it was. One of the newly hired lieutenants that had been placed not only put an additional person on the engine, which made them faster out the door, which is exactly what we're looking for, quicker response to a house fire, but the direction that that lieutenant was able to give to the additional, they had four people on the engine that night, they need three to roll out the door. And if you remember, prior to the staffing model that he has now, they had two part-timers that would work overnights, and they would have to wait until a third person arrived to roll out the door on the engine. You don't roll an engine without three, three's the minimum. On this particular night in this house fire, they did not have to wait. They had the, they had two part-timers, they had the full-time lieutenant that was in charge, and then they had, I believe, a fourth person at the station, so they rolled immediately. The turnout time was fantastic, got to the house and good thing, because the very first thing they had to do was throw a ladder to the second level and make a grab, we call it making a grab in the fire service, but they rescued someone off the second level that was not able to get out of the house because of the fire conditions. And so, a life saved, almost, you know, what are we, just a couple of months in to this new staffing plan? So fantastic work by everyone across the city, and just wanted to highlight the fact that that occurred, and it's already made a difference, it's already saved a life, and you're going to see more lives saved because of the work that they put in every day. And then finally, not that it's city business, but I want to thank the mayor. We've teamed up here this week, he's helping me in some training up in Cedar Rapids Fire, so he started today and led some trainings, and he'll be, he'll be up there assisting us for the next three days, so it's been kind of a neat partnership, and I appreciate your time, Mayor, very much.
Pleasure, thanks for inviting me. And also thank you for being a part of this, Project Better Together Board, having that experience that you brought there from a couple of years ago, I thought would carry over well to this group. Any other announcements or notes from the last couple of weeks?
Just want to say thank you to North Liberty Police Department and Fire Department. I know they hosted a number of visits from local elementary schools, and the kids really appreciate it, the trip. They got a lot of questions out about the various things that they were concerned about with the police dog, of all things, and great takeaway, so thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Just a few things, sorry.
Okay.
I attended the Affordable Housing Highlights that the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition put on, highlighting projects over the last year that the Housing Trust Fund did, and the Housing Trust Fund has announced $1.75 million for the next funding round, which is their biggest ever, which is great. I also had an opportunity there to talk to a developer who's built some projects in Coralville and Iowa City, and is, thought they had a project in North Liberty for this last year, but didn't quite, didn't quite score well enough, so they really want to do a project here, which is exciting. I also attended the DVIP groundbreaking, they're building a new shelter, and that was really a good event, and the staff expressed, the staff at DVIP expressed their appreciation for North Liberty's support in the other cities. And then I feel like we should note, and should have noted last time, that longtime resident, Don Lund, who a lot of us know, passed last month, and if you don't know Don, you should look him up. He was kind of a staple around North Liberty in different places. He volunteered at Blues and Barbecue a lot. He wrote for The Solon Economist and the North Liberty Leader in sports for a long time, and he was also the first president of the Gulfview Owners Association, so he was important in affordable housing in North Liberty, so I just wanted to mark that.
Thank you for reminding us of that, and his memorial service, I believe, is next Saturday, the 20th.
I think that's right.
Saturday afternoon, out at Club 76. Thank you, Eric. All right, item 10 is our 2023A bond sale, and item A is Resolution Number 2023-50, a resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement providing for the issuance of $9,435,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2023A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You've all had a chance to look over that document, were there any questions? All right. Seeing none. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11 is Assessment Resolution, and this is Resolution Number 2023-51, a resolution assessing delinquent amounts owed to the City of North Liberty, Iowa, to individual property taxes. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any other questions on this item? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12 is our Parking Resolution, and item A is Resolution Number 2023-52, a resolution approving parking controlled devices in the City of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Bermal.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 13 is our Communications Advisory Commission Ordinance Repeal. And item A is Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Ordinance Amendment. If anyone in the public has any comments for this, now is the time. I don't think I see anyone out there for this, so I will close the public hearing. And item B is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-12, and this is an ordinance repealing Chapter 25 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances, Communications Advisory Commission. Could I have a motion for this item, please?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Nick, do you want to say anything further? You had a great amount of information in our packet.
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
So this is, we've talked, let me back up. So the Telecommunications Commission, which was the predecessor to the Communications Advisory Commission, started way back before North Liberty had cable television and Galaxy Cable Service was planned to come to North Liberty, and we needed a mechanism to provide oversight to a local franchise agreement, and that was done with a telecommunications commission. And that, that group served through state changes in legislation, which took away our ability to oversee local franchises, and we soldiered on until about, for another eight years, when we realized we really, we needed to sort of take another look at that, and we rechristened it the Communications Advisory Commission and tried to reshape some of its, its tasks and its goals and its oversight. And we've continued to meet and continued to connect, and as we sort of continue to proceed, and we've seen changes in the importance of the channel itself, as well as a growth in what my department does, as well as building these programs that provide oversight and connection, such as the Neighborhood Ambassadors and the Youth Council, we've continued to talk as the commission and decided that really it's run its course. Coralville has, no longer has its telecommunications commission. Iowa City's no longer exists as well. We still, this, we are not changing the work that we do, we are not changing the collaboration we have with the community, but we find there are better ways for us to do that, rather than meeting at a dais every other month or so for 15 minutes to have a formal discussion of approving minutes and taking role. So we're going to continue to encourage those folks to seek out other ways to engage with us as Neighborhood Ambassadors and on other commissions that, but we think it's run its course, and we have, we have good ways to provide that connection and that oversight to the team. I'm happy to answer any questions you folks have.
Any questions for Nick? All right. Thank you, sir. And I'll say before we do roll call that this is where it all started for me, so it's sad to see this chapter of the city come to an end. Do you guys have any other questions or comments?
I think it's great, the direction, redirecting them to other commissions and taking advantage, you know, of that opportunity to make sure that, you know, they feel like their, their service was not in vain, because it was not, they're serving us, and there's other ways that they can, so I appreciate that, Nick.
Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 was City Initiated Zoning Map Amendments, and these were items that were tabled from our April 25, 2023 meeting. Item A is Possible Action to Table These Ordinances Indefinitely, and will move past them. Just need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Brian?
I mean, I just figured a good way to do it. It seems like a good way to do it all at once.
I was surprised, but it's very clean and effective, so. Tracy, could we have a roll call to table these indefinitely?
Sure. Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll jump down then to item 15. Item 15, a City Initiated Zoning Map Amendment on Property Owned by 160-965 LLC, and item A, Russ's Staff and Commission Recommendations.
Okay, so these next four are City North Liberty initiated. This is an effort to achieve consistency with the newly adopted comprehensive plan. When we looked at the map, I was slightly overwhelmed by the number of properties that would have to rezone to achieve consistency, so we decided to take smaller bites. And so this is Section 12, south of Penn, and so I identified that there were four properties that needed to be rezoned to achieve consistency with the new map. The first one is BCI Lumber. On the current map, it is urban high intensity, and so previously, the prior future land use map also designated it as commercial as well, so it's never really, for quite some time, been industrial. There's not many properties on Rancho Way that are actually zoned industrial. This is, I think, two of three, including the one to the north. So the zoning that we selected was C3, which is the highest intensity commercial district that we have currently, a lumber, or what we call heavy retail, which includes lumberyard, is listed as a use allowable in C3. And the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
For Russ.
Okay. Item B is Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Zoning Amendment. I believe we have public out there, so I'll close public hearing. Item C then is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-14, an ordinance amending the zoning map designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from I-1 light industrial district to C3 higher intensity commercial district. Could I have a motion for this consideration?
I'll move that, Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions? All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Sittick.
I will abstain due to a conflict.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries. Item 16 is city-initiated zoning map amendment on property owned by Mackin Estates LLC. And Russ, back to you for staff commission recommendations.
Okay, so this is at the northwest corner of Zeller and Front Street. It is currently zoned RM21, which is our highest density residential. This area of, of North Liberty on the comprehensive plan is designated urban low intensity, generally three-day units to the acre, but with special review can go a little bit higher. We looked at the number of units on that property. It was four and did the math, and that equated out to an RM12. So it's, that's what we would call in the zoning world is a right sizing, giving it the zoning that fits with what it's actually developed as, and it would be consistent with comp plan. Also, planning commission did recommend approval unanimously.
Any questions for Russ? Item B is Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Zoning Amendment. And again, seeing no public, I'll close that public hearing. Item C is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-15, an ordinance amending the zoning map designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RM21 Multi-Unit Residence District to RM12 Multi-Unit Residence District. Could I have a motion for this consideration?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded at the same time. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Sittick.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item 17 is city-initiated zoning map amendment on property owned by Random Commercial Properties LLC. Russ', staff and commission recommendations.
Okay, so this is directly north of BCI Lumber. Again, industrial. There's no active use on the property, but staff is recommending that this be rezoned to C3 Higher Intensity Commercial. That would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And again, planning commission unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Russ? All right. Item B is Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Zoning Amendment. Seeing no public, I will move to item C, which is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-16, an ordinance amending the zoning map designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from I-1 Light Industrial District to C3 Higher Intensity Commercial District. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
A second.
It's delayed response, but we got it. Any questions? Tracy, could I have roll call, please?
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittick.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Motion carries. And item 18 is city-initiated zoning map amendment on property owned by Stephen M. and Deborah B. Carneol. Item A is staff and commission recommendations.
Okay, so this is a parcel immediately south of North Liberty Dental off of Cherry. You may have noticed them doing some work over the summer. They did an addition in a parking lot back there. So the existing dental office is zone C1B. We're gonna give it the exact same zoning, C1B, so it all fits together. So again, planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this, and it is, would be consistent with the urban high intensity land use designation on the comp plan.
I think, any questions for Russ on this one?
Russ, what's the, to the east, so the lot for sale, what's that zone? I didn't look.
On the frontage there?
Yep.
I, I believe that's a, it's, it's commercial. It's a, okay. Don't recall if it's a C1B or a C2A. The, the challenge that we've had with that property is there's so many easements going through it. It's, I'm not sure what the answer is for that. We get some interest, and then they realize it's encumbered, and you just can't do much with it.
Item C is our First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-17, an ordinance amending the zoning map designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from I-1 Light Industrial District to C1B Higher Intensity Commercial District.
Mayor, no, you skipped the public hearing, please.
My apologies.
It's okay.
Any public hearing? Anyone from the public? I will close the public hearing. Thanks for making this legitimate. A pleasure. I'm not gonna read the consideration again. Is there a motion for it?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittick.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.